Are you scared to get Jesus out of me?
Sorry.
Hey.
We're one minute late here.
I know we are, yes.
We need to call the meeting to order and I would ask our city attorney to report on our closed session.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. The council's in closed session this evening. Conference of Legal Counsel on Existing Litigation, and there's no action to report out of that closed session.
City Clerk, roll call.
Okay, Councilmembers Powers, here, Singleton.
Here.
Shelton.
Here.
Cruz.
Here.
Payne.
Here.
I would invite you to join me in a moment of silent prayer, and that will be followed by the flag salute, which will be led by PAC 84 Cub Scouts. We blow two, beam, beam two. Out salute. Color Guard, prepare to post colors. Post colors. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, the Lord, whose name is God, indivisible, and ever changing just as it is. Two. Color Guard, return to ranks. Please be seated. Thank you.
City Clerk, are you prepared to read the video statement?
I am. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being videotaped in its entirety and will be cable cast with an interruption on Metro Cable 14, the Government Affairs Channel on the Comcast and SherWest Cable Systems. Tonight's meeting can be seen on Channel 14 and will also be webcast at www.sacmetricable.tv this Friday, October 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, October 7th at 6:00 p.m. Tonight's meeting can also be seen via live video streaming on the city's website at A DVD copy is also available for checkout from any library branch. Members of the audience wishing to address council should fill out a speaker identification form and give it to the clerk. Please speak into the microphone when addressing council and state your name for the record. Also, please silence all cell phones.
At this time, I would ask for agenda approval. Are there any additions or deletions? So then we will go to our presentation.
Okay, tonight's first presentation from Community Development, California Environmental Quality Act compliance.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight, we wanted to give you a general overview on the California Environmental Quality Act, what planners lovingly refer to as SEQA. We know that council is already very familiar with SEQA. You have reviewed and considered countless SEQA documents. In fact, you have one on the agenda with you tonight. This is more of a general overview so the community at large can better understand the SEQA process and the part that they can play in it. SEQA was enacted in 1970 by Governor Reagan, almost exactly one year after Congress authorized the National Environmental Policy Act. But unlike NEPA, which is mostly just a procedural statute, SEQA also contains a substantive mandate that public agencies not only document and disclose the potentially significant environmental impacts of their projects, but that they refrain from approving projects with significant effects if there are feasible alternatives or feasible mitigation measures that can substantially lessen or avoid those impacts. SEQA applies to all government agencies at all levels in California, from state agencies all the way down to local school districts. In general, a governmental agency is subject to SEQA when there is an activity that requires discretionary governmental approval, and it has the potential to cause direct or indirect physical changes in the environment, and it falls within the SEQA definition of a project. So what is a project, you ask? Basically, an activity is considered a project when an agency builds it, like the Central Galt Interchange, or funds it, like the Central Galt Interchange, or lastly, they issue a permit for it or some other similar entitlement, like a conditional use permit or a tentative subdivision map. SEQA is important because it gives everyone thinking about the potentially significant environmental effects that the projects have on the physical environment, but even more importantly, it mandates that the city identify any feasible ways to avoid or reduce those effects below a level of significance. SEQA has a number of objectives. The first is intended to foster inter-agency coordination in the review of projects. Other agencies are consulted early in the project review process. They are then also given an opportunity to review the actual SEQA document and make any comments when it's circulated for public review. The process also encourages public participation by the general public by much the same vehicle. The public is given notice of the availability of SEQA analyses by publication in the local newspaper of a notice. We post them on our city's website under the Community Development Department, and depending on the type of project, direct mailed notice is also sometimes given to property owners within 500 feet of the project. In addition, SEQA requires that public agencies disclose to the public their reasons for sometimes approving projects despite the fact that they have significant environmental There are three levels of agency responsibility in SEQA. First level is the lead agency. They have the principal responsibility for SEQA compliance. They are generally the one who's either going to carry out the project, or if it's a private project, then they're the ones with the greatest responsibility for approving or supervising the project as a whole. Generally, it's the agency with general governmental powers, like a city versus a single purpose agency like a school district, and for virtually all projects that come before the Galt City Council, the City of Galt is the lead agency. The second tier is the responsible agencies. Those are the ones that have some legal responsibility for approving or carrying out a project, but they're not the lead. A good example would be Caltrans having to approve the Central Galt Interchange construction design because it's a state highway. And lastly, there are trustee agencies. These are agencies that have jurisdiction by law over certain natural resources that are held in trust for the people of California. They include Department of Fish and Game for fish and wildlife species, State Department of Parks and Rec for state parks. They are consulted during the process and provide input regarding any potential impacts that they think a project may have on their trusted resources. So let's quickly walk through the SEQA process. Once an activity is proposed, the lead agency first determines if the activity is a project that's subject to SEQA. And if you remember, that's if the agency is going to build it, fund it, or permit it. If it meets the definition of project, the lead agency next checks to see if it might qualify for one of the numerous SEQA exemptions. There are three general types of exemptions under SEQA, and there are numerous exemptions under each of the first two types. The statutory exemptions is simply a list of projects that the legislature included in the statute as not requiring environmental review. Typically, those are ministerial projects, like building permits and business licenses, or emergency repairs to a utility. Believe it or not, Olympic Games fall under statutory exemptions, but go figure. Categorical exemptions are a list of classes of projects that are generally recognized as not having significant effects. Those would include things like bike lanes with an existing right-of-way, or infill development on less than five acres. And the last type is the general rule exemption, which we tend to call the common sense exemption. If it can just be seen with certainty that the project will not have a significant effect, then it's not subject to SEQA. If a project is determined to be exempt, staff includes that information in the public notice, and then at the end, once the project is approved, we file a notice of exemption with the Sacramento County Clerk Recorder and the State Clearing House. If it does not qualify for one of these exemptions, then we move on to the next step, which is the initial study. An initial study is a preliminary, it's basically a checklist that gives an analysis of the project's potential environmental effects. It helps the agency determine which level of SEQA document needs to be prepared, and it also includes all the supporting documentation for making that determination. This is a small excerpt from the multi-page standard initial study form that's in the SEQA guidelines. Basically, staff or a consultant go through each question and then check the box after reviewing the project to determine if it's no impact, less than significant mitigation incorporated, or it's a potentially significant impact. When filling out the checklist, agencies, like I said, are required to document and explain all their answers. You can't just check no impact. You have to say why it's going to be no impact. In addition, you generally identify the quantitative or the qualitative threshold of significance that you're using to make that determination, so that the public can see what you're basing that determination on. This slide shows all of the issue topics that are addressed in a typical initial study, from air quality to noise to traffic and utilities, and then there are numerous questions under each topic that must be addressed. Once the initial study is done, the lead agency can see which one of the three potential environmental documents is needed for the project by reviewing the responses on the checklist. If all of the no impact or less than significant impact boxes are checked, then a negative declaration will be prepared. So a negative declaration is actually good. It means that there will not be significant effects. If, on the other hand, there are some potentially significant effects, but there are changes to the project that could be made, or mitigation measures that could be imposed to reduce them below a level of significance, then you get to the mitigated negative declaration, or MND, as we like to call it. When mitigation measures are adopted, those are incorporated into the project approval via a mitigation monitoring and reporting program, so that the public can make sure that those measures got addressed and were part of the project. The last type of document is kind of the granddaddy of SEQA documents. It's the Environmental Impact Report. It really addresses the kind of large-scale, potentially damaging, or complex and programmatic projects for which SEQA was really created, those that do have the potential to significantly affect the environment. An EIR has some additional requirements, procedural and content-wise, that the other documents do not. So it's kind of the ultimate SEQA document. Once the appropriate draft SEQA document has been completed, we then start the public review process. The lead agency must provide notice of a public review period. The notice is generally circulated through the State Clearing House, published in the local newspaper, and posted on the city's website. We also put copies at the library and the City Clerk's office. And this gives the opportunity for the public and other governmental agencies to review the document and provide comments within the public review period. Typically, for a mitigated NIGDEC, it's 20 to 30 days. Draft EIR is 30 to 45 days. After the review period, the lead agency considers the comments and decides whether to revise their draft document. In the case of an EIR, all comments must be responded to in writing. Those comments and the lead agency's responses thereto become part of the final EIR process. The city's typical procedure is also to respond in writing to comments on a mitigated NIGDEC, although that's not a state requirement. Once the final environmental document is complete, the decision-makers have to consider that document, as well as all the comments and any other testimony in the public record, and using their independent judgment, adopt or certify the SEQA document before approving the project itself. For an MND, the mitigation monitoring program also has to be adopted. And for an EIR, the process is a little more cumbersome. Specific detailed findings must be made by the lead agency that show you've given meaningful consideration to proposed alternatives and mitigation measures identified in the EIR, and if you've decided to approve the project despite any remaining significant environmental effects. Statements of overriding consideration may also be made. That's sort of the way that a city council or a public agency can explain the reasons that you may have decided to approve the project despite its unmitigated significant effects. Generally, those are based on creating more jobs, generating taxes, providing houses, that sort of thing. And finally, once the project is approved, for which a SEQA analysis was prepared, the staff will file a notice of determination with the county clerk recorder and usually the State Clearing House. The NOD is the final step in the SEQA process. It starts the statute of limitations for a legal challenge to that document. So anyone that's concerned about a project can watch the county clerk or the State Clearing House record bulletins and know that that's their point at which they can proceed. And that concludes my report, in case you have any other questions.
Council, any questions? That was a very good report.
Presentation, thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. I think we have another presentation as well.
Our next presentation, Galt Planning Commission, 2011-2012 Annual Report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council. My name's Leanne McFadden. I'm chairperson for the Galt Planning Commission, and it's a pleasure to present the 2011-12 Annual Report to the Planning Commission for the City of Galt. The report outlines the commission's activity throughout the fiscal year. The commission would like to thank the city council, city manager, and the planning division for their efforts in supporting us during the past year. The Planning Commission will continue to administer these functions delegated to us in an effort to serve the City of Galt in a program of progressive community development, and we look forward to having a productive 2012-2013 year. In the report, you'll see who our commissioners are currently. I'm Chair. Bob Dees is Vice Chair. Craig Morris, Jim Palladini, and Alfredo Rodriguez are also members of the Planning Commission. Sandy Kiryu is our Community Development Director. Chris Arias, our Senior Planner. Kathy Krum, our Administrative Assistant. We try to meet once a month if there's things for us to see otherwise as they come forward. The commission's purpose is really to review matters relating to planning and development. What you just saw is something that we see frequently, the SEQUAs and so forth. So it kind of works together tonight, I guess, Andy. And to make recommendations on goals and policies affecting the future development and growth of the city. We consider land use matters such as general plan amendments, specific plans resoning, use permits, and subdivisions. The Planning Commission has the powers and duties that set forth in the state planning law, and any amendments thereto. The commission is hereby assigned the duties and functions of the planning agency. The commission shall perform the following functions: annual review and make recommendations for amendments as necessary to the general plan; make recommendations regarding the implementation of the general plan through actions including, but not limited to, the formation of adoption of specific plans and zoning subdivision ordinances; annual review of the capital improvement program for the city for the consistency with the general plan; endeavor to promote public interest and comment on and understanding of the general plan; consult with public officials and agencies, public utilities, civic education, professional, and other organizations, and citizens generally concerned implementing of the general plan; promote the coordination of local plans and programs with the plans and programs of other public agencies; review and act upon or make recommendations to the city council as applicable on land use applications, and perform other functions set forth in the Galt Municipal Court or as the city council requests. In addition, the Planning Commission authorized to perform duties and functions of a Board of Zoning Adjustment and a Board of Zoning Appeals pursuant to our Government Code Section This year, some of the things that we've done, we'll go back to the start in September of We do various things, so we'll start out with the tattoo parlor. That was brought before us with an action and conditional use permit in that area, and also at the same time, a minor use permit for SOFCOM internet communications. And both of those actions were approved. In January, our city attorney, Steve Rudolph, conducted an ethics discussion. In March, we had a general plan and housing element progress report. And in April, we did a conditional use permit on a place of worship. In May, we did zoning code amendments, rezone, and resolution to amend subdivision conditions, proposed changes to the architectural review requirements and procedures for new single-family residents, including those in 13 previously reviewed subdivisions. And that was a large thing, because there was a lot of changes made in some of the things that we'd been doing. And we also had capital improvement program projects, and that was doing findings of consistency with the Galt general plan. There was a joint workshop with the city council, and we also, in June, did a conditional use permit, materials recovery and recycling facility. We also have an architectural review modification for Creekside 2, and set a special planning commission public hearing for another residential subdivision that's since been rescheduled. And although maybe it doesn't seem like it, it's a lot, it's a lot. And I'm proud to present this to you, if there's any questions.
Any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Oh.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
I have a comment. Everybody that knows me and Leanne know that we're very good friends, but I was on the Planning Commission with you for eight years, and like you said, being on the Planning Commission is not an easy feat, and there's a lot that you have to learn. And I think that you guys have done well in representing the city, and Barbara, even last week, we just went by with one thing that you had planned, but you guys are doing a great job, and it's no easy feat, because some of the stuff is pretty difficult.
Yes.
So I wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
And I would just say that I am proud that you are my appointee.
Well, I am. Thank you very much, Barbara.
Thank you all for your presentation. Okay, next, we will go to public comments.
Okay, under Government Code Section 54954.3, "Members of the public may address the council on non-agenda items. Speakers may address council on any agenda item during consideration of the item. Speakers shall restrict their comments to issues that are within the subject jurisdiction of the city council and limit comments to a maximum of three minutes. Please fill out a speaker sheet located on the table inside the entrances to the council chambers and forward the completed speaker sheet to the city clerk."
Al Baldwin?
Good evening, Al Baldwin. I am one of the concerned citizens of Galt, and I'm very happy, and it's a community of character, and we're getting better all the time. I just wanted to come up here and thank the council members. There's three of them that showed up, was Barbara Paymayor, Barbara Payne, and Mary Lou Powers, and Randy Shelton at our old car festival, and that was at the McFarland Ranch, and it was really great to see you guys there. Awards were given out by Randy and Barbara, and it was great. We had less cars there, I'm giving you a report on it, but we had a lot more people. So, you know, the balance is pretty cool, you know? It's not bad. The food was brought closer to the cars where everybody could have more food. We sold a lot of food there. It was the tri-tip, we had comments on it, it was the most tender they've ever had. So it went very, very well, and I appreciate you coming out and helping us support it too. It was wonderful. The next thing, because I only got three minutes, I'd keep going on in this. There's a support our local libraries. You've probably seen flyers around windows, you've seen promotions. We had a huge rummage sale at Greer Elementary School. Right now, I just want to let you know that with your support was in the background too. You weren't left out of this. They're up to approximately $24,000, which is really good. That's going to give a few months of librarian work in our libraries, and we're shooting for $115,000, I believe it is, $1,000. And it's coming along slowly, but we have fundraisers that are, we want to put out, and we got one coming up. You probably can't see it from there, but it's a spaghetti feed, and everybody loves spaghetti, and it's October 5th, it's on a Friday, and it's going to be, let's see, does anybody know where it's going to be? I'm going to question him. Nope? Okay, I'll tell you. Valley Oaks Range. It's 347 Fifth Street, and it's only $8, and gee, you're going to see a lot of friends there, a lot of people you know, a lot of camaraderie's going to be done there, and if you're politicking, be sure to come, because it's going to help you out, let me tell you. And I've got one minute left, and I want to make one recommendation that someone mentioned to me at the car festival. And you have an overpass that you're going to be opening up pretty quick here, and they suggested, people, a couple of them suggested, that the first cars over that overpass might be some old cars in Galt. So I can just visualize a string of maybe 5, 10, maybe at the most, and going over there and seeing all these old cars onto an ultra-modern freeway coming into Galt. It's just, you know, it's mind-boggling. But it would be wonderful if that suggestion could be incorporated in your grand opening. Yes or no? We don't know. But anyway, the suggestion I thought was pretty cool. And other than that, let's see, hmm, I guess that's, oh, there's one more. I've still got, okay, there's a roundtable in Galt. You gotta get on this thing. Mark, you gotta do it. And I know this young man right over here is supposed to be looking into it. Roundtable, where the train goes around. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Al, don't you have another event coming up at McFarland?
Yes, we do, but I'm running out of time.
That's right.
Well, you caught me. That's right, I can talk longer.
Not a whole lot longer.
We have a tractor, a tractor pull that's been very good over the years. It's at McFarland Ranch next Saturday, and I think it's Saturday and Sunday. It's two days, I believe, and it's going, it's three days. Oh, there you is.
Friday is school kids.
Friday?
Friday is for the school kids. Buses will be.
Oh, oh, okay, Friday will be for the school kids to come out, yes, but then it'll be there for the weekend also. We got pies. This person, you may know her, Idar Danir, she's baking approximately 55 pies for this event. Now, she's well-known for her food, and I can vouch for that. It's going to be quite an event. It's at the McFarland, and the house out there, it's beautiful. So when you come to this tractor show, the house looks like it's a model home, given Mike Guthrie's in competition. People might even want to buy it. But it's so good, and Ron Jacobson and his wife Judy Jacobson and their crew worked all the three, four, five, six years on this thing, and it's amazing. Nice grass, white picket fence, the house is there, the windmill's there. Oh, you just got to see it.
Thanks, Al.
I did want to say that when I went out there Sunday, the fence and the grass was great.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Yeah, now that gives me another 20 minutes to talk, so thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Al. Mike McCune?
It did look pretty.
Sorry about those chuckle a little bit. My name is Mike McCune. I live here in Galt. I bring, I'm as a concerned citizen, and normally this is something that we bring before the safety committee, but I found out a few days after the safety committee had already held its monthly meeting or bimonthly meeting, and the next one doesn't happen until November 25th, and I felt that this situation warrants immediate action at the time. I'll give the address. It's on 330 South Lincoln. The individuals, the residents, had mentioned to me that they spoke with a city council member, and I'm not going to go into names. That's not important at this time. But what they're telling me is that the streetlights there, there's two streetlights there, it's right at the entrance of their main business, and they have a ramp which would make it ADA compliant. And the reason I take notice for that stuff is because I took a class on ADA complacency with Senator Zedgans and stuff like that. So it was something that I... So I, it was something that I paid attention to. And I was coming down the street and I noticed the lights were out. And he's saying that they've been out for four to five weeks. Now, there's about a three-inch curb there, there's a planter with a tree there. And it actually opens the city up to a possible lawsuit, if not a violation. And I'm a big fan of, let's try to address it before it gets to that point. There's a bill coming out right now through the senate that's doing that. But I think the city needs to get heads up on stuff like that, that's why I'm bringing this up. Excuse me, I'm sorry about coffee. There's two streetlights that are right next to each other. One flickers and then shuts off, the other one doesn't go. And they both show light directly onto this ramp or the doorway. It also is where traffic's coming down the road on Lincoln, heading, I believe it's south. And if you're cutting down from the light, you may not see people stepping off the curb that'll run across the street at the time. Mind you, it's not a crosswalk, but it happens. So my, my thing is, I'm asking the city council to remedy those lights. They are city lights from what I understand, if I'm wrong, please correct me. But they are lights, and it has been a issue for some time. So that's basically what I have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Public Works, did you make a notation of...
I did. Mr. McCune, was that 330 South Lincoln is the general vicinity?
It is, it's actually the business, that's actually the business. I'm not trying to show the business, so I just gave you the address.
We'll look into that, and if there's city streetlights, they should be fixed in the near future.
They are, the city streetlights are the green pole lights, correct?
Generally, yes.
Yeah, these are two of them. And I checked out the other ones, and those same model and all that, so...
For the public who's listening in, anytime there's a streetlight out, just call Public Works at our business line. And we'll work with S MUD or whoever has responsibility for that light. And typically, within two weeks, they should be fixed.
Right. And I appreciate you saying that, but they had said they had made this before. That's why I kind of brought it here, and I told them that I would address it to make sure the city council was aware of the issue.
Um, excuse me, Mr. McCune?
Yeah.
I also dealt with that, and I did advise the owner of that establishment to give us the poll numbers and give us a call to, to the office here, and it would be handled.
Okay.
So they were advised to give us the poll numbers.
Was that recently? Because they're telling me about four or five weeks ago, when they said...
I've told them a couple times.
Okay. And do you, do you actually need the poll numbers, or can you actually just...
It helps.
It helps?
Yeah.
A big green...
Because then we can find out what, you know, belongs to S MUD or the city.
Okay.
Well, I was just going to say, a lot of this stuff doesn't have to really be brought to the city council if you just call them all, and they'll tell you who to do this stuff to, you know, it's...
Right, and I understand where you're going with this. I mean, you're absolutely right to that point. But what I'm trying to say here is that it became an issue.
Excuse me, Mr. McCune?
Point of order, please.
Yes, sorry.
Could we ask maybe Public Works city manager and one of the council members to meet? I mean, this is not an agendaized item, and I appreciate you bringing it to us.
Yes.
So that we can move along, we have a lot of things doing it. And I know we have people from the public waiting out there.
Good point. Thank you, Mr. McCune, and I think Public Works has noted this and is taking care of.
Okay, thank you.
And thank you, Councilman Shelton, for bringing that to my attention. Do we have other public comment at this time?
For now.
For now, okay. So now we will move on to the consent calendar.
Okay, we have...
Can you read it, please?
Yes, I will. Five items tonight. The first one is approval of the minutes of the special and regular meetings of September 18th, 2012. Number two, approval of the city of Galt warrants. Number three, FPTC Form 806. Number four, document compliance with the Caltrans process for artwork features, Twin Cities and State Route 104, and a landscape maintenance agreement with Caltrans for the Twin Cities Road, Highway 99 interchange interim improvements. And number five, approval of the treasurers report for the period ending August 2012.
You've heard the consent calendar. If there is any comment or questions?
We'll accept consent.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously.
Next item.
Next item, a public hearing, Fairway Oaks Project Rezone and California Environmental Quality Act approval.
Mayor, if I may, I have to excuse myself. This piece of property that you're going to discuss is within 500 feet of my property that I reside in, so I will go out into the, maybe I'll go for a walk.
It's a warm night.
Someone can come out and get me.
Thank you, Councilman Shelton.
Good evening, my name is Chris Arias, Senior Planner with the City's Community Development Department. The item you have before you is the Fairway Oaks project. And it's timely to have this project because it really ties in what the planning commission does. And then there's also CEQA approval with it, so very timely. The project site is located at the eastern end of Cornell Road, adjacent to Highway 99 in Dry Creek, at the south side of the city limits. The site is zoned R1A arc with a requested rezone to R1C arc. The project includes subdividing the site to create 100 lots for single-family detached homes. The lots range in size from 8,000 square feet to over 18,000 square feet. All home sales will be market rate prices. The project also includes a dedication of a 10.7 acre park nestled along Dry Creek. The area along the creek will remain undisturbed, preserving many of the oak trees, creating a nice natural setting for the neighborhood. Access to the site will be from Cornell Road and Ranch Road from the west and Glendale Avenue to the north. In order for the project to proceed, as mentioned, it requires approval of a vesting tentative subdivision map, a rezone, and approval of the CEQA initial study mitigated negative declaration. The city council will be asked tonight to make a determination on the rezone and the CEQA document. The planning commission will make a determination on the subdivision map. The planning commission did make a recommendation that the council approve the rezone and the CEQA document at its meeting on August 23rd, 2012. And the request for a tentative vesting map was continued to the November 8th, 2012, planning commission meeting. This area of the city was annexed in 1992. It was during the annexation of this area that the Sacramento County Island was created, as it was separated from the project area during the annexation application process. At that time, those living in the county island preferred to remain in Sacramento County. And it should be noted that the annexations of islands now have different rules, and most of those are encouraging cities to annex these unincorporated islands. But there is no attempt by the city at this point to annex this area. As noted in the staff report, the project area had received a general plan amendment and approved CEQA document in the early 1990s to help pave the way for a low-density residential development. However, no map to subdivide the lot was ever approved. The applicant held three community meetings with residents of the area. Most of those in attendance expressed concern about the impact of the proposed project. They were concerned about the site drainage, the homeless along the creek area, traffic impacts, and the public right-of-way on Cornell Road. The project was brought to the planning commission in August of this year. And as mentioned, the planning commission recommended that the council approve the rezone and CEQA document. But the decision on the map was continued because the right-of-way issues along Cornell Road were unresolved. And at this time, it's unknown if right-of-way exists. This issue will need to be resolved before we can bring it back to planning commission. And at this point, we're planning on bringing it back in November, November 8th. In addition to the right-of-way, residents voiced concern regarding traffic on Cornell Road and Ranch Road. Many residents living along Cornell Road preferred to have a third access to the site. The map presented to the commission at that time showed connections at Ranch Road and Cornell Road only. The third option was evaluated as part of the environmental document, but was not the preferred option for the applicant. The planning commission directed staff to further evaluate this Glendale connection. It should be noted again that we just bring this up for project background that the city council again tonight will focus on the rezone and the environmental document. The planning commission will make a determination on the map. As mentioned earlier, the current zoning is R1A arc, and the requested zoning is R1C arc. The arc suffix means architectural review. This requires that the project architecture be approved by the planning commission at a separately noticed public hearing. The main difference between R1A and R1C is lot size. The minimum lot size for R1A is 10,000 square feet, and the minimum lot size of R1C is 6,500 square feet. But it should be noted that the project as presented, the minimum lot size is 8,000 square feet. The rezone meets, the rezone request meets all the required findings as detailed in the staff report. It's consistent with the general plan low-density designation. And it's also consistent with nearby developments. The Glendale development to the north is denser at R2. Creekside 1 is an R1C, and Creekside 2 is an R1B. Staff does recommend the rezone. To satisfy the CEQA requirements, an initial study mitigated negative declaration was completed for the project. It was circulated for a public review on June 27th. Went for 30 days. The study shows that all impacts of the project were less than significant or can be mitigated to a less than significant level. Staff received five comments on the document. They're from the air quality district, Caltrans, a bike advocacy group, the water quality board, and Sacramento County. The city is not required to provide a response to comments or provide an errata. But we have provided both to address most of the comments received. And the errata and response to comments really focuses mostly on the greenhouse gases section of the environmental study. And all it does is just provide some clarification. The Sacramento County comment letter was a late arrival and was not included in the response to comments or errata. The county letter does not address the adequacy of the environmental document, but it basically requests alternative main access points other than Cornell Road into the subdivision. They prefer that Cornell Road be used as an emergency access point only. But the Sacramento County engineer who submitted the letter recognized that the traffic study showed that with the project, traffic levels on Cornell Road were at appropriate and decent levels. And the final slide basically shows the requested actions for the project. And with that, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution, adopting the initial study mitigated negative declaration, and adopting the mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the Fairway Oaks project. And that the city council introduce the ordinance amending the district zoning map of the city of Galt from R1A arc and open space to R1C arc and open space. And that concludes our presentation. Mike Oliver with Arcadia Homes is here to give a brief presentation. And after it, staff will be available for any questions you may have.
Do you want to come forward now? Following that with the consent of the council, we will open the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Mike Oliver, I'm representing Arcadia Homes here this evening. Just a couple of seconds, information about Arcadia Homes. It's a privately held home builder that's been building residential units in San Jose area predominantly for many years. Over 5,000 units have been built. They have also been building recently in Fairfield, Vacaville, own properties in a number of different cities in the, in the Central Valley, different areas. And are both currently building homes and continuing to move projects forward. The property is owned by them solely. There are no other public company interests in it. It's actually a single gentleman who owns it and has been waiting for the right time to bring this rezone and the subdivision forward. He believes that it's time now to do that. We've been working on this project for two years. And as you know, the news is looking better on the real estate market. And we're very hopeful to be able to bring this to a point where it can be ready when the market is right. We know there's a lot of existing finished lots in the pipeline that will probably be absorbed first. But they have a long-term commitment to their projects and generally speaking, are looking for the long-term outcomes. They have, as I said, they have the long-term buy and hold strategy. Just a couple of quick notes about the principles that were used to try and develop the project. We wanted to be equal to or better than, hopefully, the adjacent properties to fit in, to meet the standards the city had. But also, as, as was mentioned, the lot sizes, minimum of 8,000 square feet and a maximum of, there's, well, there's one 18, but 14 is probably the, their number of those larger lots. We preserve the open space, there's 10 plus acres that'll be an open space area adjacent to the creek. The trail system will be continued on through that area, across the subdivision, and onto Glendale. We wanted initially to study both options about the Glendale connection. The concern initially was that the connection was shown immediately adjacent to the hook ramp on 99. And that is a very busy intersection and a busy area, both from the perspective of folks coming in from the outside and then also the issue with traffic going through the subdivision to get to the freeway. At the planning commission, it was requested that we explore acquisition of a property on the west side of the tire shop, and we're more than willing to do that. The city would have to help us though, because if it's a condition, we're going to need to have the ability to acquire it for a reasonable price and based on the market, if that in fact is what's happening. We've submitted a proposed roadway configuration to the city going through that lot. They're taking a look at that now. And we're readjusting the lotting on that side of the subdivision to make that work. We also will eliminate the bike pathway and the emergency vehicle access that's presently shown on the map, move them onto one part of the site. So we'll be working with the fire district to make sure it meets their requirements. Just a couple of quick photos. The information I think you've already gotten on the meetings, the public meetings we had and the onsite meetings with the residents. This is just a shot of the subdivision looking north, up toward the creek area. And the freeway is up on the far left corner. This is just sort of the trophy tree, I like to call it, where actually the roadway in will branch around that tree. We've gotten approval for that. And so that'll provide a nice entry. And the homes particularly that are fronting on the creekside are going to have some really great views and great sunsets too, I think. This is the trail coming up through the existing subdivision from the, the west towards east, and then it jogs up and goes north through, go through ours. These are the homes immediately adjacent to the north in the subdivision that's there and next to Mr. Guttridge's newer properties. This is a, a couple of the properties that are on the other side of Lincoln, on the west side, that have been developed. This is in keeping with the sizes that we would be building and the type of construction we'd build. Our minimum size for the one-story is 2,100 square feet. And then the larger two stories go up to 3,400 square feet, so very sizable units. And we would try and match this quality. This is the sort of feeling that we'd like to have for that subdivision throughout. This is the creekside entrance, which will receive a significant amount of the traffic in and out. It's an existing roadway. This is the spot that Ranch Road goes right into the subdivision there, on the east side. This is looking Cornell east toward the freeway. And Cornell is now developed to about 21 feet in width. And I think we're proposing 24 feet of width on the asphalt, new asphalt section. And then a five-foot path on the north side, asphalt path that would be separated from the roadway so that the pedestrians could use it to get out to Lincoln. It'll kind of jog around the trees to the extent we can. And that's where the right-of-way question came up. There has been, the city engineers determined, there are some right-of-way dedications that have occurred on the east end of Cornell. It's the west end that the question has been raised. We have a title company doing a title search now. Unfortunately, we don't think they're going to be finished until early part of next week, which would push us too late for the next planning commission meeting. But our goal is to have that issue resolved and addressed. And hopefully, there will be right-of-way there, and we can move that forward. And we can get city approval so that in November, we can be both looking at the Glendale connection, the planning commission can look at that, and then the Cornell right-of-way issue can be addressed. It's not an insurmountable issue if the right-of-way isn't there, but it is a whole different process and procedure that the MAP Act has put in play. So this is just another look at the subdivision and what it exists and looks like in some of the areas that'll be preserved. So I'd like, glad to answer any questions you may have, and what that is, that's it.
I would like for the, I'm assuming the council would like to hear from the audience before we have our questions.
Okay, sure.
If we can just sort of reserve you for any questions? Okay. I would like for the city attorney to explain exactly what the council will be voting on tonight. There were some questions and some issues about access into the subdivision. So if you could just clarify for the audience what we will be talking, or voting on tonight?
I'm sure, Mayor, there's two items, actually, I was before the city council. The first is the environmental document relating to the project. And the second is the rezone application to change the... the rezone application to change the zoning designation on the property. Those are the only two items before the city council this evening. There is a second part to this project, which is the tentative subdivision map. Under the municipal code, the planning commission has final action on that aspect of the project, and that is still pending before the planning commission. So the item, the question really before the city council tonight is whether or not you think it's appropriate to rezone the property.
Thank you for that explanation. With that, I will open the public hearing, and if there are any people that wish to speak, now will be the time. Jeffrey Selak.
Hi, my name is Jeff Selak. I'm a resident on Cornell Road. I was more concerned of the access as we're going through this, not on the zoning or the environmental impact, so I think I saved my fight for another day.
Okay. Save your energy.
Thank you.
Deborah, Deborah? Same thing? Okay. Next, Wendy Blevins.
I have property on Cornell Road. Let me think where I want to start on this. I appreciate that Chris brought the letter from the Sacramento County. I'm not sure if it's clear. I know you guys have it in your records about how the county is really against Cornell Road being used as the main access road into this property. We'd like to see the Glendale being checked into more before they even go to the environmental report, because the environmental report is the traffic, and the traffic is going to hit Cornell Road. On the, on some of the things, they said 70% of the houses will be using Cornell Road. Yes, it's a small road. If they're talking about making it a little bit wider, making a five-foot path, that's, we have right-of-ways. Our property says we own to the center of Cornell Road. It's county land, so there is no right-of-ways there. They're going to have to, I guess, take the property. I'm not sure what they want to do, but I think if they would go out to Glendale, they'd go out to the overpass and go out in that direction. Sacramento County does say that it's within the limits of the traffic, but if you've seen Cornell Road, I can't see 900 cars going up and down that road in one day, and that's what the numbers would be. So that's just it. I'd like to see a little bit more pursuing of Glendale and the Ranch Road. They can still use Cornell. I'm not saying we can't, we're not going to block it off, but I just think it's way too much traffic to that little road. It's just a county road. Okay? Thank you.
Dale Templeton?
I'm the mayor, member of the council. I live at 10601 Cornell Road, and I would like to say that the impact is not significant unless you live on Cornell Road, in which case it may be. A number of serious questions were voiced to the planning commission, and among them, County Public Works is on record saying the Cornell Road is fine for the load that is placed on it currently. Definitely not appropriate to significant access egress point for a city subdivision. City currently, their activities already negatively affect water drainage on some of those areas, so this is another issue that will be environmental that should be looked at. Widening Cornell Road is definitely not wanted by the residents, nor do we want a sidewalk or a walkway in front of the house where our front yards and our, you know, street parking So both, our design of the subdivision allows for two egress points, but both of them run into Lincoln Way, right where it's two-lane road. It's not, you know, unusual for a car to have 20 seconds to take a right turn, a little bit longer for a left turn. So you can see where the problem is. You compare us with Melody Lane with 1,600 sorties, but Melody Lane is a four-lane road, has a benefit of a stop sign and turn lanes there, and it has easy egress on the east side, which Cornell Road will not. So we're quite different from Melody Lane. Basically, Lincoln Way is quite busy at peak hours. It has, at 7:30 in the morning, people go to work, school, 5 o'clock in the evening. Additional load placed on it on sale day and when the church is in session, the Catholic Church. And since I live on the north side of Cornell Road, I'm about 10-car lengths away from Lincoln Way. Usually it takes 20 seconds for some cars to turn, and since if you have 110 homes on, there would be servicing, and you have 50 to 60 people either going to school or going to work in the morning, you can have some time where you get out, and I can see myself not being able to get out of my own driveway, which I'm not happy about. So basically, the recommendation of the planning commission included the possibility of moving the questionable three-way stop at cost and move it to Ranch Road with the software that would maximize traffic flow. And most important, you get a second egress and access point not on Lincoln Way. After our way drive in Glendale, do offer direct connection not only to the city sidewalks, streets, and businesses where Lincoln Way has no secure walking areas, so we can walk them all the way down to Lincoln Way, only to meet traffic traveling twice as fast. Not a really good idea. To any rate, until the access egress point is resolved, we think the project should be put on hold, and I thank you for your time.
Jim Templeton?
Mayor Payne, member of the council. I had, just, I'd like to start by saying that I have no objection to the idea, the concept of rezoning. I'm a little bit curious as to why we're making a smaller lot size, although it's less dense housing, 100 homes versus what was originally in time, I think it's 400 homes at one time. I'm pleased to see that the developer wishes to retain the open space area which was in the previous incarnations of this project. However, as a veteran of plan checking over 20 years, I have never seen a roadway the, as narrow as Cornell Road being approved by the city council, and I haven't seen one being approved by the county, for that matter, as a major access point for any subdivision of any size at all. So although technically it may be okay, I've never seen it. So it's really not something that's done. Additionally, as mentioned earlier, right-of-ways and easements, there's an issue because there's no easement on my property. I live on the corner of Cornell and Lincoln Way. And additionally, I'm very concerned about the safety of the pedestrians and of people in the area and with the additional traffic, and I'm also concerned with the fact that we have two, two access points going onto another two-lane road. Their own traffic study identifies that downstream there will be issues regarding traffic flow, and this is the opportunity to resolve that. There won't be an opportunity later once this is built out. The developer's going to build out, he's going to go, he's going to buy other property, whatever. So this is the opportunity that everyone has to fix this future issue that has been identified in their own traffic study. Other than that, I'll save any other comments till later and not take up any more of your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I would remind the council what we will be voting on, but also open it up for discussion or questions from the council, if there are any, or from staff, if they have any comments they wish to make at this time.
Mayor, do you want to close the public hearing?
Sorry? Public hearing is closed. Now you guys can talk. Okay.
So I know, I'll just say, I talked to Sandy earlier today because I was concerned about what we were voting on, and I know that there are some issues that still have to be resolved with that, but we will leave that to the planning commission and see what they come up with.
Any other comments at this time?
I was looking for Mike to see if he had something to say.
No, I was saying, Marco.
Okay. I was in contact with Mr. Oliver earlier today, and it seems like they've got a good idea going as far as extending it out to Glendale. Again, that's not what we're here to vote on tonight, but nonetheless, as the residents in that area have said, they have serious concerns about that. As far as the rezoning, again, that's what we're here to vote on. I would like to see some serious efforts made as far as giving us at least three points of egress out of that area.
Thanks for your comments. If there are no other comments, is there a motion on the recommended action? Do you need that repeated, what the recommended action is on this?
I think forget it.
Okay.
I live to approve.
Okay. We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
No second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne? Aye. So this motion is passed unanimously at this point. So if someone would ask Councilman Shelton to return?
We can look at that now.
Mayor, if I could make a quick comment just to clarify and make sure there's no confusion with the folks in attendance. The planning commission meeting on the map was officially continued to October 11th. On that agenda, we will be continuing it to the November 8th, so I just wanted to make sure that people that were going to attend the October 11th can skip that meeting, and it will go to the November 8th.
All right. Thank you.
And what, excuse me, I'm sorry, what time was that going to be?
Next item, then.
Item under regular calendar, the Public Works Department, award of design services contract for the regional law enforcement training center to URS Corporation.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, the item before you tonight is to officially document the steps that have already been taken in a resolution relative to public artwork and as well as to approve a future maintenance agreement with Caltrans so that we can move the project forward. It is a condition that these two items be approved before they'll issue any permits or further approvals to proceed with construction. I'll turn it over to our acting city engineer, Gwen Owens, to give you a brief overview of this item. Do I have the wrong item?
Yes.
I'm looking at the look on your face. I apologize. Let's start over.
Okay.
Item E4. This item is related to the regional law enforcement training center and award of a design contract to move that project forward, and I would retract all previous comments. And Gwen Owens will give you a brief overview of that item.
Very briefly, back in February of 2009, the vision plan for the law enforcement training center was brought to city council for acceptance. City council accepted the vision plan, but the project was put on hold due to lack of funding. Basically, with the current law enforcement shooting range that's out on the wastewater treatment plant, revenues are generated for outside agencies using that facility. Those are the funds that we're actually using to move this project forward. Where we're at is we put out an RFP for the development of a phased construction plan, specifications, cost estimate, and to allow the constructions to be incrementally, the improvements to be incrementally constructed. As funding becomes available, we'd like to move forward with that construction. We received two proposals, one from URS and one from Willdam. URS was chosen due to their specific experience with fire range designs, and they demonstrated the clearest understanding of the proposed project. Specifically, the project manager and many of the engineers assigned to the project have direct experience with the design of the law enforcement training facilities, and the nearest one being in the city of Stockton. Additionally, all of their references were excellent, and I specifically asked for the people that were on the proposal if they worked on those projects and references for those people. Basically, what's before you tonight is we, staff is asking for, to recommend city council to adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with URS. With that, I'm open for any questions.
Questions? Comments on this item?
I have a comment and a question. I'm glad to see where we're at right now, and I will personally try to get ahold of Darryl Clare, because some of you remember Darryl Clare, and I've been supporting this and pushing for this project, for this training, and honestly, he wanted to see that thing built and us training law enforcement before he left, unfortunately. I'm sure Liz will probably get ahold of him tomorrow, so he'll be happy and I'm happy. I know we still have, you know, numerous steps to go, but I'm glad we're where we're at now.
Moving in the right direction.
Yes, we're moving in the right direction. Thank you.
I do have to ask one question, just because I think I need to. What was the difference in the other bid? Can you share that with us?
Well, actually, I requested that both of the consultants submitted their estimates in a sealed envelope. The way it's typically done is you choose your consultant based upon their qualifications. Looking at, and one of the things that you also asked for is the number of hours. The difference in the hours, which gives you an idea of the order of magnitude, was approximately 1,500-ish hours to about 2,400 hours, with URS being lower. With that, though, there were certain items based upon URS's scope that they made assumptions on, and I asked them, you need to assume that you have to do water quality treatment, so you have to include that. You have to include surveying, and then you have to do additional geotechnical work with that. Maybe we added about $20,000, but without looking at the two cost estimates, because I did not open Willdam's, and I sent it back with the letter saying, you know, we chose URS, it was still significantly under based upon the hours.
Who was under?
Significantly under, based on their hours.
You're like, their bid was probably under the other one, but you didn't open the other one?
I can say with 100% certainty, it was under.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, just to add to that, if I may, when you do professional services contracts, there are some fairly new statutes in the last decade that require a qualifications-based, not a low bid-based, for various types of professional services, architectural services, engineering services, et cetera. And so we're actually prohibited in, in using price as the criterion for selection. It can be a factor that's considered, but in this case, we used a sealed bid to select the most qualified. We only open the envelope of the party who was deemed most qualified, and then we negotiate with them to reach the recommended contract. If we cannot reach agreement, we can then sort of pass on that contractor and open the next envelope, the second most qualified, and try to negotiate a successful contract. So we've never even looked at the envelope, but based on the envelopes that are the hours presented, we believe that we have the best value with the most qualified consultant.
But do I understand that you did look at the other bidder's qualification, you just didn't look at his?
We absolutely reviewed their, their entire proposal and scored it with a matrix of qualifications and using outside panel members as well, and unanimously, I believe, selected URS as the most qualified.
Okay. Can we do that, city attorney? Are we legal?
Not only can you do it, as the Public Works Director indicated, that is the required process under state law.
And I think it's important that we let the public know as well why we didn't consider possibly another bid, so thank you both for clarifying that. Would you read the recommended action?
Adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with URS Corporation in the amount of $198,600 for design services of the regional law enforcement training center and a contingency of $20,000 for the project.
Okay. You've heard the recommended action. Other discussion?
No, when you call for a motion, please allow me to make the motion.
Okay.
It's important to me.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
Thank you, yes.
Councilman Shelton?
Yes.
Okay. Councilman Shelton has made the motion.
Second.
And we have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye. And Councilmember Shelton, with a smile on your face.
Thank you, counsel.
It makes me happy to say this was passed unanimously.
Yes.
Okay, next item.
Next item, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute contract amendment number three with Professional Landscape Solutions for Landscape Maintenance Services.
Madam Mayor, this item, now that I've caught up with you on the agenda, is to authorize execution of contract amendment number three with Landscape Professional Services. Five years ago, the city entered into a three-year contract with them. They provided good services, and as a result, we've recommended two further annual extensions, the most recent in April of this year. Uh, their contract year actually runs February first through January thirty-first. Um, there's sufficient funds budgeted for their services, but at the time of the most recent extension, uh, the contractual maximum without prior or further council approval was a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Uh, we've had several special projects that we've incorporated this year. Um, and to be able to cover services through the end of January, we need an additional eighty thousand dollars to close out this contract. Uh, the two special projects in particular, and there were several miscellaneous projects, were the Corillian median, uh, work that was done, uh, landscaping prep. And then we had some volunteers that actually helped plant several thousand plantings up there, but the irrigation system and the prep for that work had to be done. And then we also did citywide in all of our grass areas that we maintain, uh, did citywide aeration and fertilization to supplement our current staff and get that work done in a timely manner. So those two projects were a big chunk of the eighty thousand dollars. Again, sufficient funds are budgeted, and, uh, we would recommend that you approve this. Just as a note, um, their contract will be expiring, and it is at the end of its maximum of two-year extension. We will be going out on the street with an RFP for supplemental services to go from January first, I'm sorry, February first forward. Uh, and we'll be bringing the results of that RFP to you with a recommendation for award, uh, later in the year.
Great, thanks. Uh, questions, comments on this item?
I want to comment on this one.
I do like the work they're doing. They're doing an excellent job as far as keeping things maintained. Uh, but I do have a couple of things you might want to throw back their way. Uh, their method of public safety has a lot to be desired, uh, especially on the Corillian Boulevard areas where they decide to put out their cones. You have less than three feet to decide whether you're going to be leaving the lane or not. You might want to see if they can do something about that, please. I'd hate to see a worker get nailed by a car that wasn't paying attention.
We'll certainly bring that to their attention, and we'll also include similar provisions in the future RFP.
I'd appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments? It's not, I would entertain a motion?
We'll accept. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Powers?
Aye.
Councilmember Singleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Shelton?
Aye.
Councilmember Cruz?
Aye.
Mayor Payne?
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. Next on the agenda. I guess we have no communications. So we are going to adjourn from the regular meeting and open the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency meeting.
Board members Powers, Singleton?
Here.
Shelton?
Here.
Cruz?
Here.
Payne?
Here.
Um, public comments?
I have no speaker sheet.
Consent calendar?
Uh, one, two items. Actually, there, there's no consent items.
There's no consent items. No, um...
Under departmental.
Okay, and there's no minutes?
Yes, under departmental, we have the minutes of the regular meeting of September eighteenth, two thousand and twelve.
I'm gonna shut up. Okay.
Okay, so we have two consent items.
I'll try again.
Along with the minutes, we also have a resolution of the successor agency to the former Galt Redevelopment Agency adopting the administrative policies of the city.
They're both departmental.
Okay, that's right.
So my recommendation is that you vote on the, uh, minutes, Mayor, and then I have a brief, uh, report on the second item.
Okay.
So first is the minutes of the regular meeting of September eighteenth.
I'll approve.
Confusion, that's my confusion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the minutes of the regular meeting of September eighteenth.
Board members Powers, Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz? Payne?
Aye. Motion passed forward with one absent.
Okay, next item.
Resolution of the successor agency to the former Galt Redevelopment Agency adopting the administrative policies of the city.
Uh, Mayor, council members, this item was distributed separate from the packets, so hopefully everyone has the staff report and the proposed resolution. Uh, as you may recall, uh, earlier this summer, the state adopted A B fourteen eighty-four, and with that action, the successor agency became a separate legal entity. In August, we adopted certain procedural rules in order to be able to operate the successor agency. And it's become apparent over the last several weeks that there are some few additional administrative policies that we need in order to be able to effectively operate the successor agency. In particular, um, we're looking to have the city's procurement policies, our purchasing policies, made applicable to the successor agency. So the resolution, uh, before you tonight would adopt all administrative policies of the city, um, which include the procurement policy as policies of the successor agency. So without a happy to answer any questions you have.
Any questions on this item or comments?
Straightforward.
Is there a motion?
We'll accept.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second? Roll call vote, please.
Board member Powers?
Aye.
Singleton?
Aye.
Shelton?
Aye.
Cruz?
Aye.
Payne?
Aye. Motion passed unanimously. We will now adjourn from the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency to the regular council meeting.
Wonderful. Fantastic. Um, under my report, just a few reminders. On October tenth, the Parks and Recreation Commission will meet in the council chambers at seven P M. On October eleventh, the planning commission will meet in the council chambers at six thirty P M. Um, on October twelfth, we will have our central Galt interchange ribbon cutting at three P M on the overpass. Just for information, the parking will be on the east side of the C Street over crossing. I think I said that right. And we will have a bus. It's, it's not a long walk, but it, it's not a short walk. So we will have a bus, uh, shuttling people back and forth if you, uh, would like to, to ride the bus. So, um, everyone come out. It's going to be a big event. We're, we're really excited about it. And that takes us to the next council meeting.
Okay. Comments by staff?
I don't know if everybody noticed our?
Oh, yeah, I talked about that.
Here, uh, members of the public are welcome to come up here. This is our Twin Cities Roundabout Project. If people have a lot of questions about how it's going to work, so, uh, uh, you can come up and kind of see half the design. This is also going to be in the city clerk's office on a ongoing basis, so people can stop in there and, and take a look at it.
Can they play with the toy trucks? No, no touching the toy trucks and things.
I would like to add from his comment, this was the talk about at the leak.
Yeah, definitely.
I mean, everyone, and I heard some people ask me if I'd seen it, and I said, yes, I'm one of the council members. So, yeah, that was the buzz down there at the leak.
Alright.
Yes.
Any other comments from staff, please? Okay, then we will go to comments by council members, and I'll start with Vice Mayor Powers.
Um, just that went to the old car show at the McCarlin Ranch, um, had a good time seeing you and Randy and everyone else. It was very nice.
We didn't talk.
It was hot.
We didn't talk, pardon me.
No, we didn't talk. We talked about cars.
Okay.
It was, it was a nice day, and like I said before, uh, the house was looking great and all the grounds were looking wonderful. It was very nice. I think the lawn made it cooler.
Anything else?
Oh, I think that was it.
Alright, Councilman Singleton?
Good evening, thank you, Mayor. Uh, I'm just going to take a few minutes. I wanted to point out, uh, a couple of things. Uh, well, let me get my items out of the way first. Next council meeting, I'd like to, uh, ask council if they would approve, uh, and I left some stuff in your boxes, uh, some law enforcement trading cards for our enforcement officers, which will help us, uh, give better PR to our children and the citizens of this town. Uh, I would like to, uh, uh, give more detail on that when we...
Using discretionary funds?
Discretionary funds, correct. No, I'm not going to use general funds, no. It's my discretionary. And the other one I'd like to is, uh, my, uh, other part of my discretionary funds would be to help follow up on the, uh, anti-solicitation ordinance we passed, um, a few months back. Um, and I'd like to help, uh, purchase the stickers for the businesses, uh, in our town that give the ordinance number and that, that is not allowed in our, on our, uh, in our business area. Um, but like I said, next council meeting, I'd ask the council to approve that. The other item I have is, um, I have a list here, and this is from January of this year to July. There's eighty-four items on here, and of course, I'm not going to read every one, but I wanted to point out just a few of them. That this council, this city staff here and government of the city and the citizens have, um, asked us, uh, to do and what we have done in, in past season, make these, uh, work for our town. It'll just take a few minutes.
I'm not reading all eighty-four.
Well, if I could keep it up, I'm ready. Um, the first thing is we changed medical coverage to CalPERS Health, resulting in significant savings to the city and the employees. We reduced or eliminated furloughs for all employees. Created an oversight board of former redevelopment agency and held numerous meetings. Completed update of emergency plan. Increased, uh, training, including frontline leadership course, K nine training, branding, grant writing, uh, et cetera for the police department. Purchased defensive tactics, training and equipment, maps, headgear, red men suit, uh, for our golf police department. Purchased new computer-aided dispatch records management system, of course, we just heard about that, uh, our RIN's, uh, system for the P D. Developed and advertised temporary single-family resident, uh, residential building permit fee reduction incentive program to encourage new residential construction in the city. Completed CEQA analysis for the Simmahorn Commercial Conceptual Shopping Center, uh, project and worked on perspective developer, uh, to address, uh, development questions. We approved the C U P of Cal Waste, uh, material recovery facility and recycling center, adding sixty-five jobs to the community. Uh, code enforcement, um, two and six, two hundred and six enforcement cases in the six-month period, of which a hundred through two, thirty-two were proactive efforts and two hundred and nine were closed during that time period. I'll just do a couple more. Um, completed Corillian Boulevard pedestrian crossing at Dead Man Gulch. We completed a feasibility study for Old Town Entertainment Complex. Presented development conceptual, concept for entertainment complex with, with potential developers. We opened Walker Park Artificial Turf, uh, field to the public on Sundays and installed bleachers. Uh, we've held the fifth annual Winterbird Festival and held annual, the second annual Independence Day celebration. Uh, we launched a new, uh, Gulf Sacramento commuter bus. Stayed ahead of schedule on the Central Interchange in project, which you just heard from, uh, Mark Ferg. That'd be on October twelfth. And launched, uh, online registration of Parks and Rest. So this is just January to, uh, July of this year. Uh, I, I've got to commend our, our staff, um, and the city council and the government of this town, uh, for doing such good, hard work, police department. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Singleton, and I would just add that we're not even asking for a raise.
No. Unlike, uh, Al Gore did, I think.
Is that on the, um, did he put that on the city, um, the website, yes? So if he gets to send all eighty-four, that's what they are.
Yeah, there you go. Uh, Councilman Shelton?
I just hope everyone has a great week, and believe it or not, it is fall out there, even though it's...
Yeah.
I think it was a hundred today, but...
Where, where is it? Where's fall?
Where's fall?
The weeds are falling.
Thank you, Councilman Cruz.
Um, Al? I'll just have you know, Friday, the mayor and I both attended the hundred and fiftieth, uh, anniversary of Union Pacific, their big gala. Wow, that's nice. And we need some new contacts out there to further our, uh, issue with the turntable. May not be good news, though. At least we'll know what's going on. So we're still on top of that one. Um, and now to our legislature. Our wonderful governor, as we know, made the most wonderful decision in the world by issuing both S B eleven fifty-six and S B two fourteen, which, if those of you have been tracking, were the ones who, who would have brought back some sort of redevelopment to help out cities. The good news on that one, it's not a dead issue yet because the senate is looking at overriding his veto, so stay tuned.
That is?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much. Uh, I would like to start off with asking the council to consider, um, oh, well, let's see, back in two thousand and six, we did something called the Matrix, which was a survey of our police department with goals and suggestions on where we should be. Uh, so I would like to, um, ask the council to agendize, uh, an evaluation of where we are now, uh, possibly by the Public Safety Committee along with someone from the, um, what would they be called? The public, uh, well, the Officers Association to be on, a part of, of the committee. P O A, exactly. So, um, if the council would, would agree to agendize that, um, city manager?
Yeah, I mean, what we'd need to do is obviously take a look at that. Staff would, would prepare, um, a report. I think, uh, we updated it a couple of years ago, gave a report on how things have been implemented, so we can take a look at that. Provide a report. We could, we can, uh, take a look and take it back to the Public Safety Committee, then present that report to the city council on the future agenda. It's likely to take a few months to get all that put together.
Okay.
But we'll definitely, we'll start working on it and get it brought back to the city council.
Okay.
Do you copy the, the old one?
I think we have some available.
We have some available. That'd be great.
Okay. So then, if that's, um, acceptable to the council, that will be our, our plan.
I'm good with it.
Okay. Uh, the other thing I would share with you is we had our youth, uh, council meeting last night, and, uh, county supervisor Don Natale came and addressed the youth. Uh, he talked about how he got inspired to get involved in politics, and then he explained where politics should be. Instead of all this negativeness, negativeness that you see on T V, uh, he talked about how it should be about the issues. And there was a lively discussion then from our high school students. Uh, one was asking him what he did as a county supervisor. What is the county all about? And where did they spend their two billion dollars? So, uh, I thought it was a good meeting they had. I appreciate Supervisor Don Natale attending. Um, he's always gracious in that way. In addition to that, last Saturday, uh, the city manager and myself attended something called, is it Galt Love or Love Galt?
Galt Galt.
Yeah. Out at, uh, Walker Park, and we had a lot of our communities that came together. They had different projects all over town that they focused on to clean up. Um, and maybe, was there anything that you wanted to add about the project?
A great activity, a great event, uh, great to see all the volunteers out there. We had, uh, a lot of different projects at the schools, at the park and ride lot, different facilities around the city, so it was good.
And I think this is a, kind of a movement that's not just, uh, unique to Galt. I think other cities are doing it maybe the same day. So we're all kind of working together with our, um, citizens to volunteer to clean up our town and show some pride.
You know, I just, I didn't see anything about it. Did we get any notices or anything?
Um...
Neither of them.
I mean, they're kind of blown away. We didn't see anything about it.
Well, I was invited to be there, uh, as the mayor.
City organized that.
No.
Uh, Clarity Church's.
Yeah.
Part of town that organized it.
That's even more surprising. Oh, well, okay.
Did you fall asleep in mass?
Yeah.
Alright, if there's no other discussion or business, I will declare the meeting adjourned.